Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilmeade. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We really are. We're also really glad that Colin and Julie are here with us. Hey guys, good to have you.
Hi everyone.
How you doing everybody?
And we are so excited that you are here today because this is a monumental day. This is a day that has been requested for so very long. Get Oiling is now offering you monthly content to educate and nurture both your leads and your customers. So we're going to get into what that looks like here today. This is a simple resource. It is easy to use. It does not replace the gorgeous professionally designed content that our partners create. If you're looking for something that's simple and this that just kind of gets the education piece out of the way for you. This is what you want. This is simple. It's easy and it is 100% free for you at any Get Oiling plan level. If you have a Get Oiling account. So again, welcome, excited to have you here today where we're going to be talking about Tip Tuesday, AKA your weekly wellness tips funnel and of course, provide you with the very first bit of content that you can use starting in March of 2025. So again, welcome, head over into the chat, let us know where you're coming in from. We are excited to have you and let us know, you know, what you're excited to learn about here today. Our team is going to pop out a video and get into some slides that I've prepared for you here today. And then we'll actually go walk through the funnel itself so that you can see how this thing works. So all right, today we're talking about the Tip Tuesday funnel. Again, this is monthly. You're going to be able to get new content every single month for this funnel. And today we are kicking it off. So that's what we are getting into here today. Keep it coming there, South Dakota, Oklahoma, Vermont, Philly. What's up you guys? I hope everybody is warm wherever you are. All right, today we're going to talk about the Tip Tuesday funnel and how it works to help you nurture your leads and educate your customers. This content pulls double duty. We'll talk about how we can apply and then manage this funnel each month to stay consistent without adding a bunch of extra effort. Again, this is really simple, but it does require some very, very basic maintenance. And I'll walk you through exactly what that looks like here on today's call. And we'll talk about what it looks like to use the system to gently introduce Young Living without a hard sell, as well as to be able to nurture your customers long-term so that they get more ideas, more education, and are ultimately exposed to more product. So if you have questions, if you came here looking for help or support today, that's what these calls are for. Head over to the Q and A, let us know what your questions are, even if they don't pertain to today's topic of training. This is an opportunity for us to work together. We do dedicate the second half of these calls to working with you one-on-one. So if you do need some help with something, please do go ahead and take advantage of that. It's totally free and you get access to this just for being a Get Oiling member and being here live on the call. If you would like to join us on a future live call, if you're watching this as a replay, you can go to thegetoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list, be the first to receive resources like these. And of course, to meet your incredible community here on these calls. If you would like to work together, if you'd like to actually reserve space on a call like this one, you can do that as well. GetOiling.com/webstatereview is where you go to sign up to work together in the second half of this live call that we host every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. If you'd like to hand off some of your work for someone to do it for you, that's an option as well. GetOiling.com/concierge where you can go to learn about our incredible team and see what they can do for you. All right, so let's talk about this Tip Tuesday funnel. All right. So let's first talk about how this is going to help us, right? Everybody knows that in order to have a big check with Young Living, you need people buying a lot of product. How do people buy a lot of product? They learn what it can do for them, right? So that's really one of the main things that we are all kind of focused on, right? If we have customers, we want them to continually be learning about how Young Living products can change their life so that they can incorporate more of those into their order, of course, find the hero product that they can't live without, and then have a story to share that would get oils into more homes, right? So let's talk about this a little bit because what I want to make sure that you have as an understanding here today is not just how we can take care of our existing customers, but how we might be able to get more people curious, interested and moving toward conversations with you or toward purchasing product. So the first thing to know is that most leads aren't ready to buy immediately. They need ongoing education and exposure. And this isn't just true of leads. You can have a customer that may be signed up for a kit because they thought it would work for a particular thing that they needed, but they don't see the bigger context of how Young Living can help them with basically anything else that they want to achieve in terms of their wellness and keeping their, their family healthy, right? So customers also are going to need guidance on their wellness journey. And this funnel is going to provide small actionable steps for them to be able to be guided. And then of course, to learn more about Young Living products. And this also because we're sending out an email every single week with something of value. These consistent touchpoints are going to build trust and engagement over time. This is going to help people build a you habit in their inbox, which is really important. If you want to build trust, build influence and ultimately help to better guide people toward Young Living, whether they've bought once or they've never bought before. And what we're doing here in the process of using this system is introducing in a natural contextual way, Young Living products, right? We are showing up and we are giving tips and we are going to provide recommended products to actually do something with those tips, right? So we're going to share a wellness tip that anybody could benefit from, whether they have a Young Living product in their house or not, right? And then we're going to suggest a couple of Young Living products and provide links for them to go and purchase those products, should they choose to, right? So here's how it works. You are going to have a landing page, right? So there's a landing page that a lead is going to opt into. Now, basically what this means is you're going to have a page on your Get Oiling website and you can use this no matter what Get Oiling plan level you are on. If you are on our, our seed or starter plan, if you're on our pro or diamond or basic, any plan, this will work for us. We're using a landing page, which is a simplified feature in Get Oiling that allows you to offer something, in this case, your weekly tips on Tuesdays. And someone can say, yes, I want that by putting in their name and their email address so that they can sign up for these weekly emails that you'll be sending out. So that's opting in. Your lead is going to opt in on your landing page. And there's going to be a pop-up, a confirmation after they put in their name and email, and it's going to set expectations, right? Letting them know that you're going to be sending them emails on Tuesdays, telling them that they'll be going off to your website next and so on, right? Now, in this case, no immediate email is sent, right? Typically, when you set up a funnel, you attach a campaign. Well, we're not going to have a day zero campaign here. We're keeping this really, really simple. They will start receiving emails, whatever the next Tuesday is, right? So if they opted in and it's Monday, they're getting an email tomorrow. If they opt in on Sunday, they're getting an email on Tuesday, right? These are weekly emails that are set up in a date-based campaign, month over month, and they will be able to receive those emails on Tuesdays as this is set up, right? So the last week of each month, you're going to actually go in and swap out the campaign and, and then of course, apply the campaign to your existing customers. Now, if all of that just sounds a little wild and wacky and over your head, it's totally fun. I'm going to walk you through this step by step. And we're going to meet every month with enough time for you to have your questions answered and for you to get this into place. Cause right now it's February 20th. I'm going to help you make sure you've got this in place so that you can start putting this stuff out there for March, right? And we're going to meet near the end of the month, next month, and we'll get it in place for April. So there is ongoing support for this, right? If this is something that's unfamiliar to you, don't worry, you're going to get repetition and you of course, have us here on these live calls. All right. So the last week of every month, here's what we're going to do. We're going to swap out our campaign on our landing page. And we are going to filter our leads for our people who said yes, the people who opted in. And we're going to apply the new month's campaign. Now, I'm going to show you again, exactly what all this is, what it looks like, how to do it here in just a second. But first, let's get into what we are actually going to be sending out each week in the month of March, right? So this is going to be your content, weekly tips that you're sending out to anyone who has said yes to hearing from you. This is what you'll be sending out on Tuesdays. So week one is going to be focusing on spring cleaning with a safer clean. We're going to talk about the impact of everyday cleaners on indoor air quality. Talk about why plant-based alternatives are a safer swap. And then we will feature Thieves Household Cleaner and Lemon Essential Oil. Now, really importantly, you guys, where I say we feature these products, we are talking about what products we recommend to implement the tip that we're providing. And both of those products that are, that are mentioned, there's at least two in each of these emails. They are pre-coded so that when your lead clicks this from your Get Oiling account, if you send this campaign out from your Get Oiling account, when your lead clicks that and they say, yes, I want that lemon oil, and they go and they add it to their cart and they check out, that's your customer. It already has your member number attached to it. It's already built in. It's already coded for you. That leaf link is already made and it's ready to go coded for you. Now, the second week is going to be gentle detox tips for spring. This will be how your liver filters toxins, why hydration is essential, simple ways to support your body's natural cleansing processes. And here we feature Detoxime and Lemon Vitality. Week three, we'll talk about how movement and natural energy boosters can enhance focus and mood, pairing hydration with plant-based support for sustained energy. And here we'll talk about Ninga Nitro and Peppermint Vitality. And then week four, we will talk about why environmental exposure can dull skin and how to refresh it. Simple plant-based skincare routine for glowing skin. And we will feature the Art Gentle Cleanser and we'll use lavender oil here again. Now, best practices for success here, you're going to want to share your landing page regularly to bring in new leads, right? Because what we're doing here is ultimately providing you with a lead magnet, right? If you don't have something to offer to collect leads on your website, now you do. You have weekly wellness tips that you can offer to anyone, whether they're a customer, whether they are a lead, just someone that you know. If you are offering a, maybe you're offering a workshop, right? And people come to your workshop and you say, hey, don't forget you can sign up for my weekly wellness tips. And you get those people onto this list. If you have people that you meet at a vendor event, have them sign up for your weekly wellness tips. These people are going to be receiving this value from you on a weekly basis and they will be exposed to Young Living product. So if you've got new customers, maybe they might want to learn more about wellness, right? You can educate your customers with this. You can of course, also connect with and nurture your leads this way, right? And the way that we do this is by sharing the landing page. That's where they put in their name and email and say, yes, I want your weekly tips, right? And then they're going to start receiving these on Tuesdays, right? So what we're going to do here is share our landing page regularly. We're going to remind our customers about these weekly tips. Make sure that people sign up for this, right? And then we want to engage with those who respond to the question about their wellness goals, right? So we have actually coded into each of these emails. I'll show you in a minute. We have a tip, we have the products that we recommend, why we love these products for this particular purpose. And then there's always a question, right? Because we want the people who are reading these tips to hit reply to you and start having conversations about their next order, right? Okay, this is also going to be important. You want to make sure that we're staying consistent with this. This takes, I promise you, once you have this set up, it will take you less than five minutes a month to maintain, okay? But you do have to stay consistent with it. We're going to make sure that you have the content for it moving forward, but you have to make sure that you just take a couple of minutes after the last Tuesday of the month to swap out these campaigns. Like I'm going to show you how to do, right? And then always make sure that your links are correct. We do have built-in links here that should be perfectly fine for you. They are however, in our case, coded for, for US market. If you want to modify that, I will be showing you how to make that change here shortly. And it's really pretty simple and straightforward. All right. So here's what I want you to do next. You can optionally personalize your landing page. Now, you don't have to. It's completely ready to go. You don't have to do anything to it. And then we want to start sharing that landing page link with our leads and customers. And then we're going to be swapping out that campaign after the last Tuesday of each month. And then just make sure that you're showing up on our weekly work session or checking our replays. We are going to be meeting in time for you to do this every single month to review the content and to make sure that you know how to get this set up, right? And again, the more consistently you share and keep this up to date, the more leads and customers you'll be able to nurture toward more sales. So let's go take a look at this. First things first, I sent an email out to you guys that has this blog post. I will be embedding a replay for this YouTube video in this blog post as well. This is on the Get Oiling blog. So this was sent out to you and pretty pleased team, if we can pop this into the chat. What you'll find here, if you scroll on down, is that we have today two resource bundles. Now, moving forward in April, May, June, et cetera, there will only be one resource bundle to worry yourself with. And that's the one that's going to have your weekly wellness tips campaign. So I'm going to go ahead and click this guy right here to claim my resource on my landing page. So I'm going to grant permission, claim my bundle, and then let's go take a look at this. Now, this is already ready to go, okay? Very simple. It's a little cute little three-part pager here where we've got basically a pitch for the weekly wellness tips. So they're going to get quick actionable steps to help you feel better every day. Idea, idea is tailored to this, to the time of year. So this is going to be seasonal content. And then simple ways to create lasting habits without overhauling your routine. So this is all just very doable, very simple, right? Small changes can make a big difference. By signing up, you'll discover how simple daily actions can help you boost your energy and focus, find calm and balance during hectic times and stay healthy and strong through seasonal shifts. Whether you're just starting to prioritize your wellness or looking for fresh ideas to keep moving forward, these tips are here to guide and inspire you. Start your wellness journey today. Sign up now for free weekly wellness tips and take the next step toward feeling your best. Yes, I want weekly wellness tips sent to my inbox. So this is all ready to go, right? And when they opt in, let's go up here to the settings real quick. They're going to get this, this little message here that says hello, hey, your weekly wellness journey starts here. Every Tuesday, you'll get simple actionable ideas to help you feel your best, no matter the season. We know life can get hectic. Finding time for self-care and wellness isn't always easy. That's why these tips are designed to fit into your everyday routine. No drastic changes, no complicated plans, just small steps that can have a big impact over time. Here's a glimpse of what you can expect each Tuesday. We've got practical wellness advice, simple tips and spotlights on natural products. And now again, we're saying, I'd love to hear from you, right? Since you're here, I'm curious, what's your top wellness goal? Because ultimately guys, everything that we are trying to do here is in service of getting someone to reach out to you and start a conversation, right? And so there is even a link here where it's going to pop up the contact form on your website. At every stage, we're trying to get them to reach out to you. Now, two very important things I want you to note here. The first thing is, right now, there is no campaign attached. We're going to change that and this is the only thing that you're going to need to update about this funnel on a monthly basis. You will be attaching, in this case, today in February, we're going to be attaching our March campaign here, right? And then in the end of March, we'll be attaching our April campaign here. The other thing that I want you to pay attention to here is this tag. Now, if you, oops, if you have a different tag that you use for your leads, you could include it here as well, but definitely make sure that you have a tag that is specific to this funnel. And I've chosen weekly wellness tips. So I've put that here, weekly wellness tips. I would encourage you to keep this here unless this is for some reason, a tag that you may already be using, right? So use this because what we're going to be doing is filtering our contacts for the people who have this tag. Cause what's going to happen is when somebody goes to this page on your site and they say, yes, I want tips and they put in their name and they sign up, this contact in your system is going to now have this tag, right? And so you'll be filtering, when you change this campaign from March to April, for instance, you'll be filtering for the, your contacts with this tag to apply April's campaign, right? Does that make sense? All right. So let's go ahead and follow the second step here. So first things first, if you feel like you need to make changes to the copy or the images here, you are more than welcome to do so. You can click an image, you can click replace, and then you can put in whatever you'd like. Use the Canva button, feel free, right? If you want to make those changes. Highly recommend keeping things simple and living your life and not having to worry about little details like this. And we've already handled it for you. So you're good to go. So I would leave it if it were me. Then let's go back to this blog post here. And this is our weekly wellness tip campaign. So let's go take a look at that and I'll show you what it looks like to edit this and then how to attach it to that landing page so that we can get started. So I claimed the bundle and this is a campaign. Now, for those of us who are new to content, a campaign is simply a dripped-out series of messages. In this case, this one is going to begin delivering on March 3rd so that March 4th, which is the first Tuesday, they will be receiving an email per week on Tuesdays, right? If you would like to change the time of day that this sends, I actually have this set up default for 9:00 AM Central. This may change for you based on your plan level, because this is a feature that is on higher plan levels to edit the times of day. Our default time of day is 5:00 PM Central US Time, just FYI. But let's just go in here real quick and I'll show you all of these emails and in perpetuity, all of these emails. So whether it's for March of 2025 or April of 2026, these will be formatted basically the same way. So it says Tip Tuesday and all of them at the front. And then here we have the rest of our subject line. Here, we're talking about transforming your space with simple changes. And then, did you know, the Environmental Working Group found that many traditional household cleaners can release harmful chemicals into the air, some of which are linked to respiratory irritation and even hormone disruption. Your home should be a safe haven, but sometimes the products we use to clean it do more harm than good. This spring, let's rethink cleaning. Today's tip, simplify your cleaning routine with a multi-purpose solution that works on every surface. Pair it with a fresh scent for an uplifting experience that makes your space feel brand new. Here we have Thieves Household Cleaner mentioned and we're telling them how to use it. And we are telling them they can boost the cleaning power by adding some Lemon Essential Oil. Now you'll notice that both of these are linked, right? Pretty cool. Let me show you what this looks like. Here in this URL field, you'll see that we have this sponsor ID and enroller ID tag and this member underscore number, this is going to automatically apply your member number that you put into your Get Oiling system when you got started with us, right? So this is automatically going to link. So here, let me just show you what this looks like. If we go up here to, if we go to Young Living, you'll actually be able to see the sponsor ID and the enroller ID. Now obviously yours is going to show up with numbers. This particular account doesn't have a valid Young Living member number. So let me get back over here to my campaigns. Here we go. So if you are in a different market, right? Or if you want to maybe modify yours for Canada, for instance, then what you want to make sure that you do, because you can see this says U S E N, right? You want to make sure that you are recreating this link for your market. And the way that you're going to do that is by using this leaf link right here. Okay, so insert Young Living link with my member number. And so what you would do, and let me just hit enter down here a couple of times, just to show you what this looks like. If we go to Young Living, and let's maybe, let's just say we want to do this for Canada. Here, I might want to look up Thieves Household Cleaner. Here we go. Perfect. So here, I'm going to copy this link from up here. And then I'm going to come back over here and I'm going to click this leaf link and I'm going to paste this guy in right here. And here you go. It's going to have your sponsor and enroller ID there. So this is what you would then use. I'm going to actually unlink this just so I can grab it and copy it. And then I would swap that out right here in the URL field, right? So that's what that looks like. Pretty cool, right? And, and yes, yeah, you would. If you're wanting to change this for your market and it's just, it's two products per email you have. We're sharing these bundles every month over like a week and a half before you need to use them and update them. And it's all pretty simple. And I do give you, just like as I shared here, a list of all of the products that we are actually talking about in these, oops, sorry, in our, in these emails, right? So if you want to, what I would do is actually just grab the Young Living link for Thieves Household Cleaner, Lemon, Detoxime, Lemon Vitality, Ninga Nitro, Peppermint Vitality, Art Gentle Cleanser and Lavender. I would grab the links for all of those and just go ahead and create your leaf links for them. And then it's just a really easy copy paste job into your, into your campaign. It's really simple, straightforward, just swapping a link out there. And yeah, it's already coded to you. So that's essentially it, right? So we have an email for each Tuesday of the month. You can make modifications to these. If you prefer not to feature the particular products, if you want to add more to these, see this as a starting off point, a jumping off point. It is a complete thing that you can just move ahead with, that you don't really have to modify. If you would like to modify it, you of course, certainly can, right? Now let's talk about how we can get this connected so that it's ready to go. So what I'm going to do here is I'm back over here on my landing page that I've claimed. What I want you to do after you've claimed both of these resource bundles is go up here to Settings and then under Campaign, I'm going to type in March 2025. And there you could see, there's our Tip Tuesday for March 2025. I'm going to go ahead and click Done here, click Save. And now I am going to go out into the world and share this. I'm going to share it with my customers. I'm going to put it on my website and share this with my leads. I'm going to put this in my social media profiles. I'm going to put it in my link in bio, right? Put this everywhere, because this is, these are the tips that you're sharing every week. So we say, I want tips and I'll show you exactly what happens. So here, I'm going to put in my information. Sign me up. And here's that confirmation message that I mentioned, right? You see that? Pretty cool. If we say click here, it is actually going to, oh, team, we might want to address this. This is, this is not jumping to where it needs to. This should pop up a contact box. I, we may want to make a modification to this just to make sure that it works. Or maybe we need to visit whether or not we can have a contact pop up here. Anyway, so when we click Continue, it's actually going to move us on to your homepage. Now, your homepage may be a built-in theme in Get Oiling. It may be a page like this, a custom one, right? So you have options where that's concerned. Now, this person, me, who just signed up, you'll actually be able to see on your dashboard when somebody signs up. You'll see here that I just, I visited the website, right? So I can click here and you can actually see that Weekly Wellness Tips is a tag that I, that's applied to this contact. So here's the other step, right? So once a month, and I'll, again, I'll be showing you how to do this next month when it matters. So don't feel like you have to commit this to memory, right? So at the end of next month, what we're going to do is we're going to filter your contacts for this tag, Weekly Wellness Tips. And we're going to find all of the people who said yes to your weekly wellness tips. And what we'll do here is we will go and we'll find our campaign. And in this case, again, this would be for the April campaign. But if you already have been sending out weekly tips and you want to have people who are already on your list, start getting these, you can go ahead and filter for those people and then you're going to go to bulk actions like I have here and find that Tip Tuesday campaign and go ahead and apply that to those contacts. And then they will start receiving those messages on the first Tuesday of March, in this case. And then you'll be able to preserve that experience for everyone moving forward where all of your new leads who will be arriving on a page like this one, right? To sign up, they will be able to get the most recent tips that are scheduled. And then of course, the people who signed up previously, that's what we're doing by filtering for this tag. The people who signed up for this previously will also be able to get the latest, greatest content that you are sending out. All right. So I am really excited to get into any questions that you guys might have and see if we need to maybe demo, look through any of this together. I will be putting the replay for today's video onto that blog post that also has the, the resource bundles connected, or you can of course, click the description on YouTube for this replay and that'll send you to that blog post as well. All right, Cornelius says, this is premature. I hope you'll have this. You probably do. Is, that is a landing page where people can sign up for our Tuesday. Yes, yes, we do. Absolutely. The campaign, excuse me, you need to claim this landing page once. And the campaigns are the only things that you'll need to claim and use moving forward from there. All right. Is the pre-code already in the system or do we have to set it up first? You actually don't need to set it up first. That's something, it's actually the first thing that you did when you signed up with Get Oiling. Was you put in your Young Living member number. So that Young Living member number is what is going to automatically apply as your member number in this campaign. All right. How will the link work when it's going to one of your brand partners? So you'll be sending this to brand partners and customers. If they're already your customer, then they will just go to Young Living and they'll purchase, right? But if they're not your customer yet, when they click this link and they go purchase, they will become your customer, right? So this is a sort of passive way of engaging. I can tell you that if somebody has never had a conversation with you about Young Living products, you will keep that customer longer if you have a conversation first and don't just rely on these automatic mentions of products and direct links. But you know, in some cases, folks will see a link, they'll click it and they'll decide to go buy because they're curious. But you know, in some cases, folks will see a link, they'll click it and they'll decide to go buy because they're curious enough, right? And so that's a sale that I want you to get to. All right, is there a way to use an enrollment link so that they can choose the country? I'm working in three different markets in English. You have a workaround tip. It's a really good question. Hmm, so. Yeah, that's a good question. We, we might need to put our heads together on that for like a sort of special use case there. I know the majority of the folks that are using us are going to be, you know, in their one particular market. It might be the case that you offer different versions of this, Cornelia. You know, for, for different markets potentially to, to your people. But as, as something that's specifically lead focused, what you might choose to do is in the campaign, maybe have one campaign, one funnel, but go in and make those modifications and say, you know, if you're in the US, click here, Canada, click here, Panama, click here, et cetera, if that makes sense. So that could be an option as well, just to provide maybe a link to, to the products for each market. If you're trying to really help everybody at the same time with the same campaign. I would encourage in that case to just make sure that it's visually very well organized. Maybe you've got, you talk about it, maybe you make it bold. And then you can say where to buy it, right? And then put a US emoji and a link, right? A Canadian emoji and a link, right? Panamanian emoji and a link, et cetera, for the flags, right? And that might, that might help in that case. All right, can you change the name to Thieves Cleaner rather than Thieves Household Cleaner? So that it's a smaller bottle, ever since they rebranded the container saying Thieves Household Cleaner, it only brings up the big one. You can, absolutely. You, you can change if you don't want to talk about thieves. You could put something else in there entirely. It's completely up to you. I went for the big one because I want you to get a big check. You can obviously change that if you like. All right, do we have to sign up for reminders every month or will you send them out to everyone? Yeah, so you will need to keep this up to date every month. But what keeping it up to date looks like are literally those last two things that I showed you, which is claiming the campaign from us, swapping it out on your landing page, and then applying the new campaign to everybody who opted in previously. And that entirety of all of that takes less than five minutes. So keeping this up to date every month so that an email goes out every single week should take about five minutes. All right, if we're not sending to out of country, we don't need the leaf link? That's right, yeah. If, if you are, if you're US-based and you're speaking to people in the US, just period, then you need to do absolutely zero with this. If you are like, say, Cornelia, for instance, serving people in multiple markets, there may be other considerations to make. And generally speaking, like if you're in Canada and you're only sending to fellow Canadians, then you may want to make more modifications to this. And we're only ever including two, maximum three products per email. And again, I'm going to be showing you every month how we can make really simple modifications to this, just to make this streamlined and easy for you. And then again, in the case that you are, say, like Cornelia, building in multiple markets, it may behoove you to add in, right? So have the US one, but then maybe add a Canada one, add another one, et cetera. But yeah, for the majority of us, it's going to be very simple. You don't need to do anything to it. All right, you're redoing your website. Do I need to finish that first or does it need to go to a website after signing up? So I would just go ahead. If you're redoing your website, use one of our built-in themes. Just use a built-in theme as your homepage. And let me show you real quick what that looks like. If you go under Customize My Site, we have, depending on the market that you're in, just so many great options. And here, let's scroll. I have a lot of pages in here, but we actually also have built-in themes. Oh, here we go, Customize Built-in Website Themes. Oh, and here's also where you can make sure that your Young Living member number is inserted, right? Make sure that that's there. And yeah, so you can kind of learn more about what that looks like. We have other trainings that talk about our built-in themes, but I would just utilize a built-in theme for now. And that will make your life a little easier. Let's see, if someone signs up in the middle of the month, do the tips start at the next Tuesday? Yeah, yeah. So it's date-based. So in March, the 4th, 11th, 18th and 25th are the Tuesdays. So if somebody signs up on the 12th, they will have missed the first tip of the month. They will start receiving on the 18th, right? And, and so on. So this is, you, you don't have to worry about the day. People can sign up anytime and they will always get the next one that's coming. All right, where do you think is the best place to put the landing page on our website, on the homepage or the menu? I would link from it really anywhere. I would absolutely put this in your blog posts. Like, you know, as a, a call to action in your blog post to sign up for your weekly tips. I would also, yeah, I would place this on your homepage somewhere. Yeah, absolutely. I would put a link and then like send them to this landing page from your homepage. Yeah, for sure. Put it in your email signature. Put it in your social bios, your LinkedIn bio, all of that. All right, do we just add hashtag contact to that click here link in Settings? Can, oh yeah, that's, it is already there. I think we need to investigate why a pop-up isn't working there. Maybe it's because there's already a pop-up on the page. We're going to check that out and, and get back with you guys about that. Okay, let me see. If we add the tag to a person, will the Tuesday tips go to them without signing them up for it? So if you add that tag to a person, you still need to apply the campaign to the tagged people, right? So we have this tag set up in your system because you have this landing page, right? The landing page is what applies that tag typically. And so, and that's because somebody said, yes, I want this. And so our system is saying, okay, this person wanted this, so I'm applying this tag so I can find them later. So if you wanted to put that tag on to someone, it's not going to deliver the campaign to them automatically. You're still going to need to filter your contacts for the tagged people and apply the campaign to them. And that's that step two of what you're doing at the end of the month, every month, right? That's swapping out the campaign on the landing page so that new leads get the new campaign and filtering for your tagged people so that you can give them this new content the following month. All right, would it be good to put into our monthly newsletter? Sure, yeah, absolutely. Why not? This is really set up as something that you can use for whatever you like. If you would like to save those campaign messages as saved replies and send them at other times of the year, you could do that. If you want to use those to build additional content into what you're doing. So let's just say maybe you're sending a tip every Tuesday, but now you've got your blog post. You want to maybe put a blurb about your blog post and a link to your blog post in there. It's up to you. You can really use this as a jumping off point if you'd like. But it's designed really to satisfy the, I just need to get something to my people every week. Can somebody please just give me something that's consistent that I can get to my people every week? And that's really what this is, but you could do more with it if you really wanted to, for sure. Do we need to be on a certain plan for the tips or the landing pages? No, ma'am, you don't. Nope, Peg, you can have any plan level and Get Oiling in the system will work for you. It is designed to function at all plan levels. That's why we're using very simple features here such as our landing page. We're not using automations. It's just a, it's a campaign and a landing page with a tag. And that's it. And it's, that's works at every plan level in Get Oiling. All right, so I'm setting up my blog for March. Wouldn't it be a good idea to add a check out what's new on the blog kind of thing to the weekly tips? Yes, absolutely. So what I would do is maybe use your, use saved replies to create like a section that you can pop in to these campaign emails, right? So, and, and then what you would do is just first of the month, or rather, this might be the end of the month. You would have what's new on the blog or, you know, you might like this blog post or something like that. You can update that in your saved replies and then just plug them right into all of the emails before you apply those to your contacts. I love that idea. Can you do a short training video separately on how to do those two steps we need to do every month? Then I can save that video and watch it every month when I go to make the changes. Yeah, so actually, Cornelia, this is going to be what we do on the Thursday before you need to do this every month from now on, right? So when it's time for you to know what to do in March, we're going to be here showing you how to do it, right? So this, this is not something that we will only visit or revisit intermittently. This is going to be something that we get together and we talk about every single month. So don't worry, when it's time for you to make changes to this funnel, we're going to be back here next month doing the exact same thing. All right, the built-in themes are not showing in my account, only the custom pages that show in that menu. Okay. Yeah, I wasn't seeing that either. Let me see, what's the best way, team, for us to, if we've used custom pages for our website and we'd like to switch back to a built-in theme? I thought that we could go this way, but do we have to know like the name of it, what we're looking for? Ah, yes, okay. Let me, let me scroll down here real quick. I don't know if it's showing up like with the, yeah, it's not identifying the difference between pages and built-in themes. Here we go, you have to scroll to the very top, that's why. There you go, Donna Marie, I just figured this out. All right, where it says I would like my homepage to be, if you're here, note that we are like in the middle of it all, right? These are our, our pages that we created. Scroll to the very top and you can see built-in website themes. And so we've got a bunch of those to choose from, so just pick one of these. If you are using Stripe on your website, you're taking payments for any reason on your website, don't select this one. Because, well, Stripe does not want to hear that we don't actually sell it and that we point to somebody else who does. So don't select that one if you take payments. But yeah, select any of these other awesome ones and, and you should be good to go. All right, let's see. How do you recycle the campaigns for new clients in the future? In six months, I want all my new members to receive the March 2025 campaign. Well, Stacy, if you'd like to, you could absolutely do that. But in six months, we're going to have new content for you then too. So you don't have to do that. What I would do, if you would like to repurpose this content that we've created for you, here's my recommendation. So the, the content really is the campaign, right? So this is, I'm going to type in, wrong search bar, March 2025 right here. So I'm going to type that in and here it is. It's got four messages. Now, again, you don't have to, in perpetuity, you do not have to create content or do anything with this, right? Because we're going to give you April, May, June, July. Like this is something that we are committed to doing on an ongoing basis for you guys. But if you would like to take what we've put here and use it somewhere else, here's what you can do. So open up your message, right? Go to Saved Replies and click Create Saved Reply From Message. And this one is going to be, and actually before I do that, let me go and just grab this sort of header here so that I can name my saved reply. So Create From Saved Reply, I'm going to paste that, Transform Your Space With Simple Changes. And now, this saved reply is available for you to use however you'd like. Do you want to maybe put this into an online class? You can do that, right? If you're building out course material, you could reuse this. If you would like to pop this into a blog post, you can do that. If you want to put this into another email sometime in the future, you can do that as well. So again, if you want to repurpose what we're giving you, and again, you don't have to send them this same stuff in six months because we'll be giving you something new in six months that's related to the time of year it is six months from now. But if you would like, you can go in and rename or create from scratch here. New Saved Reply From This Message and then title it, you know, based on the contents that are here, right? And so now you have access to this, that again, with saved replies, you can put these in blog posts, new messages, new campaigns, and even content in your online classes. So you can reuse that as well. All right, is this email only or can it be text? If that's how the person has marked as preferred, what would it look like as a text? Good question. So these campaign messages are currently set up to deliver as email. The reason why is because there are multiple links that are included. And, and because we feature multiple products and we aren't photographers creating beautiful content like our partners are. If you're looking for really gorgeous content, there are people who sell it who we love and they're featured on the Get Oiling website and you should still buy from them. But what we have is something that is simple and, and free and something that you can just plug right in and use. Now, the reason why we don't have this set up for text is because it's not really optimized for text. Text is really going to work better where you've got beautiful images, right? However, you can still deliver this as text and it will still work as text. So let's go take a look at this real quick. Now, what your person is going to see is, is they're going to see this first little bit of, of message if they signed up via text. And they are going to see another link that says Read More Here, right? And that's going to take them to this sort of hidden page on your website that's going to display this email like a website page. If you've ever clicked something from text that says Read More and you click it, you'll know what I'm talking about. It almost looks like a blog post. And so it'll actually take them to a page that has the same content displayed that's on your website. So this can absolutely send via text. Now, if you would like to take these campaigns a step further, again, we are delivering these more than a week before. You would need to apply them to your contacts. So you can make changes to these month to month. If you would like to maybe prioritize text or kind of set this up text-wise, you can actually specify what you would like for this to, to show up as via text, if that's your preference. Okay, was able to find the built-in themes. Are we able to make modifications to the themes? Unless you see a field for it, so the My Story and Photo is really what you're going to be using to modify the built-in themes. There are like in the advanced section, sometimes there's a place for you to add a little bit, something extra. But generally speaking, the built-in themes, they just are what they are, right? They're, they've got links that are coded to you. They've got videos that are straight from Young Living. It is a replicated website, right? Those built-in themes are replicated websites. They're a great placeholder for you if you are working on building something custom. And they are a phenomenal sharing tool, whether you just want to use that as your website and, and how you promote and share Young Living and have that ultimately be your website because they're gorgeous. That's a reason why Get Oiling was sort of created to an extent in the first place a long time ago was Amanda wanted a way to share Young Living that wasn't so obviously, I'm going to be talking about Young Living at my class that I'm promoting right now, right? And so these built-in themes are designed to generate curiosity, like any good website should. And they're developed really beautifully. So you really don't need to do anything to them except for add your story and photo, and then it really does just look like it's your own personalized website. All right, do weekly tips have Get Oiling on the top page or can we put our business name instead? So it's not going to have Get Oiling on the top, no. It, it should, when you claim this into your account, it's going to show up as yours. So if I go over here, we'll take a look at this here. You can actually see, obviously Jane's website is GetOiling.com/JaneL, right? So if you have your own custom website domain connected to your Get Oiling, then that's what would show up up here, right? So, yeah, and it's going to say Get Weekly Wellness Tips Delivered to Your Inbox, which again, is not going to go to Get Oiling either. Great questions. All right, my group is culturally diverse. Are the theme images diverse as well? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's, that's something that actually was updated a handful of years ago. And we are always open to, you know, to feedback. If, if you, if you have suggestions, please send them our way. Representation is important. And of course, you could always customize your website and make it look exactly like you want it to as well, if you want to fine tune that. Okay, let me see if there's anything that I'm missing here. If you have questions and they have not been answered yet, please make sure that you put those into the Q and A. Want to make sure that we don't miss those. So here's what we need to do, right? Let me just recap here really quickly what you're going to want to do today. Let me grab real quick this link one more time to this blog post and show you guys. Wait, oh, that's not what I want to do, sorry. Come on, zoom, get with it. Here we go. Okay, so this blog post here, we will be releasing a blog post just like this every month and we will have a call like this every month where we will recap what we've talked about here today. Again, you don't have to memorize anything I just said. It's all going to be reiterated and we will walk through exactly what we need to walk through when you need to modify this moving forward. But what I want you to make sure that you do ASAP is to claim this landing page, right? So that you can have your copy of this little cutie right here that you can be sharing and getting people onto your list tagged with Weekly Wellness Tips, right? That's the first thing that we need to make sure that we do is grab that landing page. Then you're going to grab this campaign, right? That's, again, it's another resource bundle. You're going to grab this resource bundle, get it into your account. If you want to or need to make modifications, you'll be making some modifications to that campaign. And then finally, what we're going to do is go into our system to our landing pages. And we're going to find that landing page and we're going to attach right now, the Tip Tuesday. that landing page and we're going to attach right now the Tip Tuesday, March 2025 campaign, right? Oops. Tip Tuesday, March 2025, there you go. So we're going to attach that campaign. If you have already been sending out wellness tips to people who said yes, right? Then you can also filter for those people and apply this campaign, right? And so in that case, I would be going to my, I'm just going to go back to my dashboard. I'm going to go to my contacts. I'm going to filter for whatever the tag is that I use. And I'm going to bulk contact actions and apply that campaign. And again, this is not going to start sending them any messages in this case until March 4th, the first Tuesday in March of 2025, right? So just do those things, right? Grab your bundles, make any modifications you need to, and then make sure that the March 2025 campaign is attached to that landing page and that you go ahead and apply that campaign only to people who have already said yes to getting weekly tips from you, if you're already doing it. If you aren't already doing it, please do not apply that campaign to anybody because they didn't ask for it. And we don't want you to get your messages in the junk, in the spam, or marked as spam or things like that, right? We want to only send people things that they say yes to. So then what you can start doing is sharing that landing page link, get people saying yes. Now, can you use this for text? Yes, absolutely. Text is included there on the page. My really big recommendation though is for you to allow this to be an opportunity for people to build an email habit with you. We want people to get in the habit of looking forward to and opening your emails on a weekly basis. If you can build a large list of people who will reliably open every email that you send them, you can write your own checks, okay? So just please remember this moving forward. Can you do text with this? Absolutely. If that's someone's preference, that's, that's an option here, right? But you will 100% benefit yourself and your business long-term if you can get people committed to opening your emails, promise. Okay, let's see. Can we change the default time when messages begin to go out? It's set for 5:00 PM Central right now. So depending on the plan level that you have, there are options to modify that. I believe that's at premium and higher. Yeah, premium and higher plans, you can change the exact time of day that those go out. So I had it set using a premium plan for 9:00 AM on Tuesday, so they get it in the morning. 5:00 PM Central Time is the standard time that things go out. If you do need to make those modifications, that is something that's available at the, the plan level. So if they say yes via landing page, Donna says, the campaign won't go to their spam. So in theory, yes, ideally. So we've worked together recently in the bootcamp, Donna, about setting up your, making sure that you've got the correct email attached to your Get Oiling account and that's connected to your calendars and all that other stuff that we worked on. So if, if you can make sure that you're only ever sending emails from Get Oiling using a domain level email address, right? That's going to help keep you out of spam. Making sure that people are opening these emails on a consistent basis, right? And that's what this is really designed to help you do. So we're checking that box off. And then, yeah, just make sure moving forward that you're only ever sending things to people that they ask for. Then you can pretty reliably count on not going into their spam inbox in whatever their email client is that they use, right? None of the stuff that we are putting into these, these weekly Tip Tuesday campaigns or anything that should blag any spam filters. Everything is, is pretty like neutral in that way. It's not very promotional, hypey, you know? We're not using any hard sell language. So it should all be fine, but definitely make sure that you're sticking to the rules of email. If you were, if you guys would like to learn more about that topic, actually, it's a huge topic. So much so that we've created an entire course around it. If you go to Online Resources and Courses, Email Marketing Mastery right here goes through everything that you need to know about email and using email to grow and maintain your business. All right, Peg says, I'm restarting my Young Living business. Awesome, have a lot of contacts that have opted in via email or text, but I also have a large contact list I don't think I want to move forward with. Is there an easy way to update my contacts? Yeah, so the big question Peg would be whether and how your list is currently segmented, right? So is there a way for you to know who on this list is who, right? So there are the people that you do want to be in contact with. How do you know who they are? Can we go in and check the box next to them and maybe apply a tag to all of them, right? So what I would consider doing is isolating by applying a tag, one, pick a tag, to the people that you want to keep, right? And that way, you're able to clearly see who is who and you can make some modifications that way. A lot of folks who use us, because you know, Young Living businesses can be very large. If you download your VO file, that's your entire VO file. That can be thousands more people than you plan to communicate with, right? The bigger your business grows. In that case, it can be really important to maybe be mindful about your, your VO file and, and what you're sort of taking out of your VO file to put into Get Oiling. But you can absolutely delete or even bulk delete contacts that you don't want to have in your system anymore. So if they're people that you know that you don't plan on engaging with at all, I would just make sure that they're clearly isolated from the people that you do want to stay engaged with. And then you can follow some of the steps in our help articles to delete the contacts that are no longer relevant in your system. All right, Donna Marie says, when I first started with email, I didn't know the rules, so I did not have an opt-in. I'm implementing it now, but I have a 45 to 50% open rate. I don't have to go back and ask permission, do I? All right, so the first thing that you should know, Donna, is a 45 to 50% open rate is actually considered very, very, very good, number one. So know, know that you are actually doing better than you probably think you are. That's an excellent open rate. But in terms of permission, this is a really good question. If you have received permission in the past, what you want to be thinking about is what do they give you permission for, right? Is it close enough to what this is so that you wouldn't have to ask permission? Has it been a really long time so that they maybe have forgotten that they said yes to something like this from you? What you should know is that if you haven't been emailing a list consistently, think at least once a month, but ideally more, for over three months, you should probably go ask permission. Because the attention spans that people have are just so short, right? And our inboxes are generally so flooded and obnoxious, right? We forget what we sign up for and then we just go on a spam, you know, filter, delete rampage. And we don't want that to happen to you. So it is better to be mindful and to ask before assuming because A, people are going to like you more for that. You're going to get better engagement from a permission email, right? Because it's going to feel more direct. It's not a marketing email. It doesn't feel like it was written for everybody. It feels like it was just written for them, right? And so, yeah, I would, I would go back and ask permission. And then because that person very recently made a new yes decision, they are going to be much more likely to open those emails that, that start coming, right? The best way is to always stay congruent with the expectations that you set. And if you have deviated from those, you just kind of need to go back and start over and get a yes again. Unless, again, what it is, is just so similar to what you had already promised and it wasn't that long ago that you were delivering on that promise. In that case, you don't need to. In most cases, you do though. It's just better to do, it's better practice. Okay. Gunilla, I have a challenge with my domain. I followed your instructions, don't understand how to link it. Okay. This might be, oh my gosh, your website is gorgeous. This might be something maybe to take to our team, Gunilla. Yeah, yeah, I think that's, it's probably something to take to our team because I, I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, let me see, yeah, domain questions are a little bit over my head, unfortunately. But everybody else who's here on the call is super good at that and, and super fast in the inbox. So if you could shoot a message over to support@getoiling.com, we could hop right on that and help you out. Okay, awesome, I am so excited for you guys. Yeah, we will be doing this again next month, right? And, and hey, for those of you who are still here, if you like done-for-you content, and maybe just show me a quick, a quick show of hands. Who's excited about the Wild Notes launch? Yeah, is that a lot of us? Okay, all right, all right, all right, okay, hold on, hold on. Okay, I'm going to put your hands down, I'm going to put your hands down. Who would really love some done-for-you Wild Notes content for your Get Oiling website? Yes, okay, awesome, good. Be here next week because there is a member of our community who has graciously offered to give away a Wild Notes funnel for your website and resources for follow-up so that you can get people onto your own waiting list and promote as this rollout happens. So make sure you come next week, bring your friends, bring your team. You're not going to want to miss this. This is a free resource that's going to be made available for your Get Oiling website. And I'm really excited to introduce you guys to a just sweet, sweet person in our community who's put this together for you. So we'll be back here same time next week to talk about that very thing. Do bring your friends, they're going to be excited about this and as we are. And yeah, I hope you guys enjoy this content. Let us know if you have any questions, head over to our community. I would look forward to seeing you there in our Facebook group and we'll be back same time next week. Take care, everybody.